So I would like to welcome everyone for joining us today. This is a conversation with school board members about how they can navigate the development of effective school district budgets in an environment of rapidly declining revenue and a lot of uncertainty. This is part of a series of discussions that's been put on by A+ Colorado. My name is Erica Meltzer. I am the bureau chief of Chalk Beat Colorado. We're a nonprofit news organization that covers education issues, and I'll be moderating our discussion today. If you want to know more about Chalk Beat, you can find us at www.chalkbeat.org. I want to give a big thank to, thank you to our sponsors today, which include A+ Colorado, the Gates Family Foundation, Education Reform Now, and Root Ed. Some of the topics that we'll be discussing today is what should district board members and leaders consider when thinking about budget building and cuts? How can districts ensure that dollars are going to best meet student needs with a lens of equity, particularly in terms of the needs of the most vulnerable students? And how can and should districts think about community engagement and politics as they make these decisions? Our panelists today are Dr. Marguerite Rosa from Georgetown University. Dr. Rosa is a research professor and director of the Edunomics Lab, a research center focused on exploring and modeling education finance policy in practice. She leads the McCourt School of Public Policies Certificate in Education Finance, which equips participants with practical skills in strategic fiscal management, finance policy analysis, and financial leadership. Dr. Rosa's research traces the effects of fiscal policies at the state, federal, and district levels for their implications on resources at the classroom level. Her calculations of dollar implications and cost equivalent trade-offs have prompted changes in education finance policy at all levels of the education system. She's led projects on state and school district finance policy, financial equity, pensions, compensation, higher education finance, and other topics, including the Institute of Education Sciences' multi-year study of weighted student funding, the Finance and Productivity Initiative at the Center on Reinventing Public Education, and the Schools in Crisis Rapid Response Paper Series. Dr. Rosa regularly works with state and local policymakers and education leaders, including the National Conference of State Legislators, the National Association of State Boards of Education, the Association of School Business Network, excuse me, of School Business Officers, Education Writers Association, and Policy Innovators in Education Network. And she's been interviewed in national media and featured in many publications. Our other panelists are Susan Miller, a school board member from Jeffco Public Schools. She began her career as a municipal credit analyst for Standard and Poor's. She was later a public finance investment banker for Kidder Peabody Company, helping municipal issuers across the Western United States finance capital programs. She homeschools four children for five years, after which she and her family participated in Alberta's Great Education Bargain. Her family moved to Colorado 10 years ago, and she's been active in the gifted and talented community at the local, state, and national level. Ms. Miller is a graduate of Northwestern University, and in November 2019, she was elected as the district board director for the Jefferson County Board of Education, where she serves as treasurer of the board for this $1.2 billion school district that serves 84,000 children and their families. We're also joined by Angela Kobian, who's treasurer of the Denver Public School Board. She's a first-generation Mexican-American from southwest Denver. She was elected in November 2017 to represent District Two, the first in her family to graduate from college. Angela Kobian attended Colorado College and graduated with a bachelor's in political science and a minor in Spanish. She earned the Fred Sonderman Award in Political Science and is a member of the Pi-Gamamu Honor Society. She returned to her hometown to teach second and third grade literacy for English language acquisition Spanish students in the Denver Public Schools. She also earned a master's in curriculum and instruction from the University of Colorado-Denver and was a Fulbright scholar working with an NGO in Mexico on program development for student-led social change initiatives. Upon returning from Mexico, Kobian returned to the school where she taught as a bilingual community organizer with Together Colorado, and she led school and congregation-based organizing with parents and parishioners, working on immigration and education issues. Kobian enjoys reading, politics, history, listening to jazz, and cumbia, pop music, and as well as visiting the Denver Art Museum. And we are also joined by Gilbert Patrick Meistas from the Primero School District in western Colorado. He graduated from the Primero school system in 1973. Four generations of his family have attended this school system, and he, as many of his family members, have also been school board members. He is the CASB representative for the Primero School District, and while working as a coal miner, attended Trinidad State Junior College, receiving his license as the first Colorado class of registered EMTs and an MSHA certificate as an underground electrician. He was a nine-year member of the underground mine rescue team and a journeyman heavy equipment operator. And with his brother Rudy and his wife Connie, he owns the Morning Glory Ranch, which is a 100-year-old ranch in western Colorado. So thank you all very much. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Rosa, who has a presentation for us, and then we'll transition to some questions and conversation. And you can use the Q&amp;A function if you want to add your own questions, which we will make sure to make time for before our hour is closed out.
So let me just check, is my screen up?
Yes. Are we good through the screen?
You can see the screen. Okay, excellent. So we're talking about the financial turmoil and what it means for public education, and we've been looking at districts across the country and what's happening with them and going to happen. And I want to start with a big-picture slide that we've shared with groups in the past, and that is a little bit of a summary, which is that the 1920 school year, district finances were relatively stable, even with the pandemic. There's minor financial impact, if any, with some districts actually underspending on things like professional development, substitutes, stipends, bankwrits, graduations, you know, and so on. And even though several made bigger spending items on remote or digital learning, overall there wasn't enormous impacts on the school year spending that's coming to a close. And there's some variation from district to district, but the real issue is for this next school year. And that's because, in the meantime, the economy tumbles. Tumbles is probably an understatement. In many places, sales tax revenues have plummeted, states have tapped into reserves, there's, as you know, widespread job loss, closing in on 40 million people, and that will have big effects on our economy. And another feature, which we'll talk about, is that teacher retention increased, meaning more teachers stayed and didn't leave. And that's because there were fewer other jobs to go to, where they might have had family members that lost a job. But all of this means that we will have major financial upheaval for this next school year. And we know that states have fewer funds for districts, and they have competing priorities going on right now. And the reduced teacher turnover actually drives up the salary costs in districts. And as we call this, a double whammy, oops, sorry, where the revenues are dropping, at the same time, expenses, if, you know, if everything were normal, are increasing. If we have more senior teachers stay for a year and not be replaced by a junior teacher, then you have higher salary costs. And we're actually seeing that in Colorado districts already. So we also know that more students are living in poverty now, with parents having lost jobs, pension funds are going to see a larger drain, bigger gaps. We might even see, in some places, enrollments drift up if students are drifting out of private schools. So I want to talk about this second piece, because people may not see this one coming, and it's a good one for folks to check in with their districts to say, what do our salary rolls look like for this next school year? And basically, when you have widespread layoffs, industries stop hiring, and some spouses are unemployed. And what that means for teachers is that that thing we used to call the teacher shortage is gone. We don't have a teacher shortage anymore. We have a whole lot of teachers who are holding on to their jobs, and this happens every recession, but especially when we have a lot of layoffs, there is no hiring going on in most other industries. So teachers aren't leaving for other jobs, and you have turnover or attrition dropping. That means more teachers stick around, earn another year of step-in column raises and COLAs if they've already been negotiated, and they're less likely to be replaced by a junior teacher, or a junior teacher being less expensive. And what we find is districts don't see this coming, but their payroll will jump up faster than normal, with little way to absorb it. And this was a chart DPS Denver released from, you could just see from over the last school year, that Denver had negotiated larger raises, and that had an immediate effect on the number of teachers leaving DPS. So, and then that suddenly meant, wow, we have a lot more salary raises, we actually have to pay. I mean, we were successful at attracting them, but that comes with cost implications. And where districts do have COLAs planned for 2021, these increases ultimately could force more cuts elsewhere. So I want to flag that, but also to remind folks that it doesn't take much to destabilize district finances. It really doesn't. We even see districts start cutting, and you're looking at the numbers going, no, you grew your spending by 3% or 4%. And they said, well, we needed 5% to just cover the cost growth. So they feel constrained, even if they're at spend revenue increases. And we are looking ahead to 2021, and it will likely require deeper budget cuts with active cutting. We're talking about what that looks like. Labor in education feels like a fixed cost, it operates like a fixed cost. Reduction in force can be traumatic and exhausting, central leaders trying to patience, not only of their teachers, but parents when they lose some of their, you know, favorite staff and so on. And we also know these kinds of effects can be exacerbated on the high-poverty schools, and where more junior teachers may be affected, where unfilled positions remain empty, student needs are actually, at that very moment, increasing. So there will be a lot of eyes on this issue of whether or not the cuts that happen this fall are disproportionately affecting the high-poverty schools. So just a quick mention, it's very hard for districts to expand and contract financially. We think of them as operating as though they were in a fiscal bubble, insulated from economic shifts. You know, they're not. But these commitments can, commitments they make can, it turns out, be really hard for them to make adjustments. So if they've committed to multi-year pay raises, you know, other industries tend not to do that. If the step and column structure of the pay scale builds in raises for people just for coming back, and those are, you know, most other industries, no one else is getting a pay raise this year, and that will be already built in. One-size-fits-all staffing, if you have a nurse, a librarian, a counselor at every school makes it harder if you staff that way to contract. You don't have a way to, it's sort of all or nothing now to come to a librarian. And seniority-based layoff policies mean that if you go to lay people off, you're laying off your lowest-cost workers, you have to lay off even more people, so it gets messy fast. And there's inflexible pension or retirement commitments, and we could do an entire hour on that. So we want to point out the typical stages of hurried district cuts. And I say hurried, because, you know, districts make different decisions when they're, when they have to do this quickly than if they're doing it over four or five years. And we see the first stage tends to be a stage we call freeze. And it's freeze hiring, freeze travel, sort of expense cards, maybe permit contracts to expire, dip into reserves, postpone maintenance, you know, early retirements, things like that. None of this actually saves that much money, especially in an economic downturn, but it's often the first stage, and it's sort of a sign that things are going to come. Depending on this time, we, I don't want to say waste in the freeze stage, but how long we sit there, we may be missing the other stages of cost-cutting. The next stage, we call trim from the top, but this is really where leaders say, all right, well, what do we not need? We can maybe trim some of our contracts, we'll pay payments to community partners, we see after-school partners hurt during this phase, eliminate professional development days, prep time, maybe we'll cut some central administrative positions, supplies, consolidate departments. Again, not a whole lot of savings, and that's because we really haven't done much at all to labor. And labor is, of course, the biggest cost factor in public schools. So if we get, if we get, you know, at that point, you've maybe saved, I don't know, 1% to 3%, but if your gaps are greater than 2% to 3%, then generally speaking, the district's going to require some sort of cuts to labor. And there are a lot of ways to cut labor. We say there are two stages that tend to happen, and one is there might be proposals for things like salary adjustments, altering benefits, reducing days or furloughs. So maybe Fridays off for a while, or we decide to furlough our crossing guards or things like that. Or we've seen around the country, we're requiring bigger co-pays on the health benefits plan, or we've gone with a lower-cost health benefits plan. So the thing is, depending on how successful the district is with these, there's the, it may have to do what we call, I guess, kind of like the nuclear option, which is we're cutting, we're cutting positions. And that's often not explained during the negotiate phase. And when I say the word negotiate, a lot of people think I just mean negotiate with labor unions. I don't. I mean even negotiate with board members, negotiating with district and principals and all those affected, and community who might not want to see Fridays off or benefits altered or things like that. And what often happens is, after we're done having those conversations, people may have thought, we won, we didn't get this cut, and they wake up the next day and read about the layoffs that happened as a result. And that's, that's sort of the sequence of this. And the larger staff layoffs, we typically see districts will lay off elective staff, librarians, academic coaches, kind of phasing and getting closer and closer with teachers being the, you know, the ones who've gone even deeper in it. So I want to do a poll, and this is, this is, we're not, we're not collecting any information on who answers what, so you could just answer one and change your mind halfway through the conversation, it's fine. But imagine you were trying to do an emergency mechanism to reduce labor costs, and these are roughly back-of-the-envoile equivalent, this is going to be a big impact. You could either do an across-the-board salary reduction, say 5%, you could do layoffs, you're going to lay off 4% of your employees, or you could do across-the-board furloughs, and you're going to tell everybody there's 10 fewer days in the school year. So if those were your choices, have at it, pick one. We'll give you a second to do some, get, those are roughly equal on labor, labor impacts, but as you can imagine, they, they have different implications for students, different implications for schools, and the delivery of services that we have remaining. And some of you may be saying, well, you know, it depends. Of course, it depends. We're just trying to have a fun poll to keep people awake while we're going out through this. But these are equivalent ways, and a lot of people will say, I'm against all of them. And just as you're voting, yes, everybody's against all of them, but at a certain point, you can't spend money you don't have. So districts may be in the very real position of saying, I'm against all of these, but now I've got to pick one. So how are we doing? Are we ready to post the results? All right, so fascinating. Much more appetite for across-the-board furloughs. So this is kind of interesting, because they have different impacts. It says, you should see that 58% said across-the-board furloughs, fewer days. That is, tends to be the politically most access, most, the most feasible, I think, in a way. No one likes layoffs, but sometimes we don't get the furloughs or the salary reductions. I did see a little more than a third choosing the across-the-board salary reduction, and I suspect that some of those, we can talk about this after, are thinking, well, at least that allows me to keep my services intact. I don't reduce school days for the kids. I can go forward and offer all my students still the education they need, and maybe the salaries that, you know, our employees are likely to still feel lucky to have a job when nearly 40 million don't have a job. So taking a 5% temporary hit maybe is, is more protective of my organization. Some of you are saying, my, you know, my community won't have anything to do with that, and that may be the case. And a few of you said layoffs, and sometimes people with layoffs say, well, this is a good time to kind of clean house, to kind of go through it all and decide where do we have redundancy under-enrolled schools and things like that. So there are, there will be rationales for all of these, but we're going to talk a little bit more, so let's go ahead and close that. I want to point out a little bit about what we're seeing so far, and this is kind of Colorado-specific, but we've looked across lots of places. A lot of freeze and trim actions, a lot of cuts to activities, athletics, after-school, pre-K kinds of things. We've seen a few paid freezes, lots of furloughs, that's a more common one, it's a four-day-week actions. And one that I'll just put a placeholder in, and we'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, a percentage cut to the student-based budgeting amount, where the principals absorb cuts at their schools, and we'll talk more about that. So these are the kinds of actions we're seeing in these early stages. We know there will be many more stages. What we're worried we'll see more of are a lot of across-the-board actions. We're kind of worried about the furloughs, in part because it means, you know, that's one that's not great for the kids, right? They just get, just get an across-the-board reduction in services. And a lot of people are thinking, well, it might be the most fair for our staff, but in a, in a time when kids got reduced services this year, you know, we're sort of worried about that. And centrally dictated layoffs that affect some schools more than others. This could even be, it could be a layoff situation where we're going to lay off, you know, our most junior teachers, and, and that might be a lot of teachers in one school and not as many in another. So that, those are some things we're worried we'll see more of. What about more strategic actions? We hear this phrase a lot, why don't we use a scalpel, not an axe? And I will just offer, that takes vision and strong leadership. So you really, really have to have that in place to go ahead and say, I'm cutting this unit or this group and not this other one. So we noticed that, that leaders can absolutely do this, but they, that takes vision, strong leadership, it takes time, planning, negotiation. I just don't want to under, undermention this, you'll see a lot of pieces saying, we need to be using the scalpel, not the axe. And I just want to point out, it also means accepting uneven impacts on staff. So we've decided to cut all of this and not these other things. And some people will say, that's not fair to staff. And that's when the strong leadership comes into play, saying, we're protecting what matters most for our students, and that has been our decision. How does decentralizing cuts work? And we are seeing some of this, and that's where a district would make a percentage cut to each school's allocation, and then the principals go about the work of protecting what matters most to their students. Often, principals work hard to take advantage of attrition. So if we lost a third-grade teacher, can I move my reading coach into the classroom? If I lose a vice principal, you know, can I encourage my staff to sort of survive with a vice principal this year? And that way, I'm taking advantage of attrition, or we're sort of reorganizing around the pieces that matter, and the human pieces that matter most to our community. That also requires a lot of principal engagement, and that's that strategy you see at the bottom of the blue box, where you do a percentage cut. I believe that Jefferson County is doing this, so we'll probably get to hear more about that in the Q&amp;A. So really quickly, messaging matters a lot here, no matter what you're doing. So first of all, sooner you talk about this stuff, the better. Don't wait for firm numbers. We have a lot of research on the messaging and how it can work to erode trust or build trust. If you don't have firm numbers, it doesn't mean you can't say anything. Our district will have fewer dollars to spend next year, although our number's not yet firm. As we prepare budgets for four and 8% cuts, we will need to make hard choices to leverage our reduced dollars to do the most for students. So you're sort of setting the stage and letting people know. If they don't hear anything, they think they're going to skate free, and then we tell them all later, they say, you lied to us. So it's really important, it's early communication. Use dollar figures where you can. The district must cut $400 per pupil. If we exempt one school or department from cuts, we'll have to cut more from another. People don't understand that, you know, if they're successful at arguing against cuts for them, that may mean deeper cuts for someone else. So it'd be helpful to point that out. Involve principals. Principals, it turns out, are the most trusted group to have these conversations. We are engaging with our principals on how to protect matter, what matters most for our students. Make sure you're emphasizing students. We aim to reduce layoffs in order to preserve student services for our students. Don't end with, we're just trying to reduce layoffs. You know, that feels, that helps, that makes people think, the system really doesn't actually care about my kid, they just care about their friends' jobs. So we've, we've got to draw that line to students at every turn. And invite participation. We want to hear from all involved. Please communicate directly with your principals, and we'll be in regular communication with them. So those are some suggestions for how to do that. I'm going to end with this slide, five things that make this time different, and it's really different than anything K-12 has seen before. It's so sudden, there's little time to absorb cuts. 39 million in other industries have already been furloughed or laid off, so there are people, there is, across-the-board, people are taking pay reductions, including state workers. The governor in California just announced a 10, or proposed a 10% pay cut for all state workers. So we're not, what we're not seeing is, is even in, in public organizations, a commitment to keep everybody whole. So that's an interesting one. We saw doctors lose money. You know, a lot of people did only worked when they had cases, and they closed a lot of hospitals, so it's a, it's a, nurses and so on, the impacts are broad. We have this time more eyes on the equity impact, so both district and state budget cuts, but we'll be able to assess the impact of cuts by school. So we'll really want to pay attention to what does this action do to the spending at this school versus this school. And we know now that districts are vulnerable to economic shifts. I mean, we, we should know that. This is our second recession in a row of this, and, and we may want to make some changes in the long-term commitments we make, so that we're not vulnerable going forward. We're also, the whole, the game around technology is different. Usually, technology is the first thing cut, and we're not seeing that this time, it's more of a solution. So the relationship with technology, I think, will be forever changed. So we have a lot of this kind of stuff going on. We have a 30-minute webinar on our site tomorrow. Feel free to reach out to us if you want more resources, but that's what I have for you all.
Thank you so much for that presentation, really informative. The first thing I'd like to do is ask our school board members to weigh in on this, how these stages and how these different types of priorities align with the conversations you've been having with your colleagues, with your administration, and with community members. And Angela, if you would like to start us off, that would be great.
Sure, Ms. Meltzer, thank you for having me here. And hello and good afternoon to my fellow board members from Jeffco and Pretty Middle School District. Hearing the information that Dr. Rosa went over at a high level about trends of school districts and relating it to what's going on in Denver Public Schools, I thought of two major themes. The first theme is intersections, and the second theme is about values-based leadership. And I'll make both of those two things really concrete. When I talk about intersections, I'm talking very specifically about the intersection between what it takes to reopen a school district the following year under the guidelines of our public health officials that we're taking so seriously, as well as also trying to balance a budget. Because trying to reopen a school district during a pandemic has cost implications, right? So that intersection of reopening a school district and also balancing a budget is that first theme that I'm seeing really play out in Denver Public Schools. We have three different working groups going on at the moment. One is the Budget Advisory Committee, and this Budget Advisory Committee is a group composed of community members ranging from current students, recent alumni of the Denver Public Schools and their undergraduate experience, parents, staff, teachers, school leaders, as well as our finance team, to do the top-line answer of how do we get to $61 million? That's the most recent figure that we're looking at, based on the scenarios that we're seeing coming out of our state legislature and what we know now. At the same time, our Board of Education, led by President Olson and Vice President Jen Bacon, have worked with our board to identify, and we took this from Houston Independent School District, and seeing their shift in governance, at the governance level of what are our board's current crisis priorities, and making sure that those crisis priorities... And making sure that those crisis priorities, in response to COVID-19, are intersecting, again, with the work of the Budget Advisory Committee, knowing full well that while we are prioritizing the physical and mental health of students and our staff, both central and school-based, that has cost implication. So it's an interesting coordination that we have to play. And I'm thankful for our governance team, including our superintendent, who is working with two of my board colleagues and their senior leadership team so that we, as a governing board, have ears and eyes in both of those spaces. The third working group is the reopening working group, which is made up mostly of staff, school leaders and teachers who are putting together a plan about what type of education we will deliver to our students and families when we reopen, in whatever shape or form that takes. And then finally, to wrap up this team of equity, this is something that was identified as a guiding principle for our board as well as a value for the Budget Advisory Committee. And when I say equity, that means for us taking a look at the disproportionate impacts of things like some of the potential levers under compensation and how those would disproportionately impact people if they were just done across the board. The city and county of Denver has a commitment to raise the minimum wage. And one of the first actions I took as an elected board member was to ensure that we, as a school district, also had a commitment to that. Many of the people who I represent and am related to are lower-wage workers who are working in our kitchens, in our facility services, and knowing that those are also DPS parents and that Denver Public Schools is also something like the second-largest employer in the area. So we play this double role of not only taking care of our budget, but also taking care of our DPS community, from students to parents to staff.
Thank you, Ms. Kobian. And I think the, that question of the additional reopening costs that might be involved or the additional cost of how we run school next year, that's a really interesting topic that I'd like to dig into a little bit as we go forward. I'll pass it to Ms. Miller now to, to share the perspective from Jeffco.
Thank you very much. And once again, thank you for having this panel. I think every single time I listen to Marguerite's presentations, I learn something new, which I appreciate greatly. And I think one of the components is really, how do you explain to people what the impact is going to be on their lives? Because it's going to be impactful. And I think the ability to quantify that and on a per-pupil basis, especially since we are so focused in Jeffco on student-based budgeting, that's a real number that people can get their head around. And it helps to frame it well. I think also, when we're looking at the private and public sectors, we need to be, one of the parts that Marguerite raised was vision. You know, where are we looking? Not just forty-five days from now, because we have to have a budget in place by the end of June. It's where are we going to be twenty-four months from now, thirty-six months from now? Because this is going to continue to go. And I know at our board table and Dr. Glass and everybody that sits at that table has been talking about this is not just a one-off. This really is starting to look like it's going to be a two-, three-year process. We see what's happening with the state revenues. We see what's happening with pension, which, as you mentioned, Dr. Rosa, that could go on for hours in a conversation. So those are the things that we're paying attention to. And I think in the public and private sector, we really need to be focusing on where, where do you cut? Where there is potential loss of value versus where do you cut where there's not going to be as much loss of value? And I think you need to weigh that carefully, because like you mentioned earlier, if you cut in one area, the impact could be much more dire to certain populations than if you cut in another area. So I think having that vision and that leadership is critical so that we really do understand what the impact is going to be if we cut. For example, what happens if we cut counselors? Will we just hired a number of counselors in Jeffco to help with the mental challenges that are, many of our children are facing? And we know for a fact that we're going to have those challenges coming into school next year. So we need to weigh the value add for those costs. And I think looking in the future, all of us as districts really need to be looking at, how do we use zero-based budgeting? How do we use activity-based budgeting, budgeting for outcomes with fidelity? So that we really can talk with our communities about why we are making the choices we are making. And the third part I'd like to bring up is, from the firm that I work for, we work with districts across the country, and it's the time challenge we face going back to school. As Angela was noting, that there's different phases that we're going to have to be processing. And time can either be our friend or it can be a challenge for us. So for example, the districts have lag time. We know what we have to be bringing into our facilities in order to meet the different plans that might be coming into play. And we know that the lead time is only three months. So we have to start from where we want to be in August, what is our start date, and backing into those and realizing, as Angela mentioned, there's costs associated with these different plans that we were talking about. And right now in Jeffco, we've put out, Dr. Glass and his team have put out to the community, to the principals, and then to the teachers. And now the community is starting to look at, what are the different plan options? The Plan A, Plan B, Plan C, hybrids, one day a week, is that the tutor model, two days a week? What does that look and like and how are those costs going to be associated with the cleaning multiple times? So I think it's a very dynamic situation that we really need to be recognizing, we have to be nimble and fluid. And this year of forty-five days to finish a budget is going to be impactful for what we have to do next year. Do we use reserves this year more or less? What does that look like? So those are all those conversations happening at the board table.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And Mr. Mestas, what does this look like? These are, these are two of the largest districts in the state. You're representing a small rural district. What specific challenges do you see with regards to budgeting and, and what resonated with you from the presentation?
I think first off, that we pretty much are aligning with what Dr. Rosa just presented. But I will say this, there are approximately a hundred forty, the hundred and seventy-eight school districts in Colorado that are considered rural districts. That being said, I've been a lifelong resident of Primero Artful School District. I've experienced during my multiple terms on school board, the effects of a boom and bust economy. We are reliant fiscally on the energy industry. First, it was coal. We're four generations of coal miners in my family, including myself. During that period of time, there were many times that we were poor. The school suffered. There was a mass exodus of families. Now, we were in the position of being reliant on the coalbed gas industry. That is all but disappeared as well, which was an important driver, not only for the state, but specifically for us. I have seen the effects of drastic times where entire families are gone. Today are the worst of times I have seen in my tenures as a school board member. We're twenty miles from the nearest town. We have a small grocery store in the community where most people gather. There, there's stories of losing their jobs, not being able to adequately feed their families, and the realization that their chances of finding gainful employment elsewhere are between slim and none. I've spoken to students who yearn to be in school and the hopelessness they feel about COVID-19. No child should feel this kind of despair. Decisions at the Capitol have devastated our economy from the loss of oil and gas revenue. Our cattle renters and farmers have suffered greatly as well. We had an enrollment of one hundred and ninety-eight students, pre-K to twelve, of which approximately fifty percent of them are students that are out of district. The implications of that are huge, especially in light of the unknown conditions of going back to normal operations in the fall. My constituents voted on a $10.2 million bond. It shows what a commitment they have for education in our community. We used that money to redo our existing school, add additions, and created infrastructure for technology. The biggest problem we have right now is inadequate bandwidth for the school and for the community. We have approximately two hundred and twenty Chromebooks and thirty hotspots available for our students. Due to the remoteness of our district, parents are incurring additional costs for computer usage, especially if they have several kids trying to log on to an inadequate bandwidth in the community and unavailable to those who could not, who cannot connect to the internet at all due to lack of infrastructure. The possibilities of riffing personnel, losing dollars through taxpayer contributions, and the unknown at this point of incoming revenue or lack of funding is worrisome. What future actions will we have to take? I think it is safe to say that in my position, or in our school, a three to five percent pay reduction across the board is in order, along with a position or two needing to be riffed. All this after the initial 10% being trimmed from our working budget prior. Is it more prudent and feasible to look at additional funding sources or resort to more budget reductions? We've leveraged our intake as best as we can. The savings were long overdue, but won't satisfy the entire dilemma this time around. Our board has worked hard to provide educational resources. We had a full-time school nurse, two counselors, a director of safety and security, who also has the authority of the sheriff's department. We are thirty minutes away from any kind of emergency services or responses. That was a huge thing for us. At the end, what goes, what stays? I can only hope and pray that our elected officials at the Capitol realize that our future is dependent on the best education our children receive. Our elected officials do what is right for our kids educationally and don't let political agenda stand in your way. I would also like to say that we are fortunate that the Colorado Association of School Boards has been a tremendous advocate for all of us. Without their guidance and advocacy, I think we would be up the river without a paddle. And I think I speak for most of the small rural school districts across the state where incur costs that are not seen by the urban schools, miles that we travel on dirt roads, the costs of transportation to upkeep of our vehicles. We're in such an uncertain time right now. We've done our best to trim as best we could. But right now, we are on that spot of dealing with the unknown. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Those are, those are some really difficult challenges. We have about fifteen minutes left, and these are really complex topics, and I want to try and move through some questions. So, so even though it's really complicated, if you could try and keep your answer to under a minute, we'll try and move through some, some questions. I do want to return to this question of reopening. We saw some state guidance that envisioned really different school environments with dramatically smaller class sizes. We also did see Governor Jared Polis allocate $510 million from the state pot of CARES Act money to school districts. It has to be used on COVID response. How are you thinking about budgeting that, that extra money, balancing that with reopening versus your ongoing operating challenges? And, and this time maybe I'll start with Ms. Miller and go the, the other way around.
Sure. Thank you. I'll, I'll be quick. I think there are definitely buckets that we can look at where we can be reimbursed for some of the COVID expenses that are going to be coming down the pike. And so I think we all have to be looking at those opportunities where we can find the reimbursement dollars and be thoughtful about how we allocate, you know, those additional costs appropriately. We know that there has to be the social distancing. We know that we have to have clean air. We know that there's the PPE concerns and costs that are, we're going to be incurred. And with that, there's going to have to be in some way, shape, or form, potential capital costs incurred. You know, with the, how do you use outdoors? How do you, how do you use the, the kiddo's spacing, you know, anywhere from the forty-four square feet to the hundred-square-feet parameters for, for spacing for children? So all those costs have to, I think, be taken into consideration. And how do we, how do we get back to, I think Angela mentioned the, you know, just the, the healthcare or the health overseer of, of what this is going to look like for our kids? We know that our children need to be back in school. They, they need the contact with their teachers. The, the big challenge, I think, we, we haven't really touched on is, this year, for the past, since March, teachers knew their students. They had already a connection with their kids. This next year, we're not going to have that necessarily. You might in high school have a couple of kids that have the same math teacher, or they might have a similar science teacher. But in general, in the bigger schools, and I, Pat, you would, you would be better to state the rural status, of course. But those transitions are going to be huge. And fifth grade to sixth grade and ninth grade, and eighth grade to ninth grade, how are we doing that with one day a week or two days a week? That, those to me are, are questions that, I understand the financial side, you know, how we're going to figure that out with Governor Polis. But to me, the big transitions with children and their willingness to stay engaged with us is even bigger in terms of how we find them, how, how we connect with them, how do we keep them engaged? So that I know that's not necessarily answering the big financial nugget, Erica, but I think that that's something that we all have to figure out how we keep our kids in the system.
I think that's a really, that's a really important point. And I, and I think it probably, when you start thinking about budgeting and staffing, that it does circle back in.
Counselors and touchpoints and pairs to check in. I mean, it's just a, it's a complex, crazy problem.
Mr. Mestas, what are you thinking, how are you thinking about the federal allocations and your needs in your district and reopening?
Well, in regards to the COVID-19, which is the big elephant in the room. We realize and we've collaborated somewhat with CASB, but they, these are things that we are going to implement. Probably staggered schedules, house screenings, smaller groups at schools with some kids who are more prepared to work from home. Catch-up learning opportunities for students who show evidence of large academic slide. We need to be flexible with both in-school and at-home learning plans, including digital device access in case of a second wave of COVID-19. PPE and supplies, non-latex gloves, non-touch thermometers, mask, gowns, and eye protection. Mental health supports, key, teacher support and professional development. An increase in cleaning, disinfecting, and sanitizing costs. Care for students with chronic conditions. Replenish the use of one-time funds to address COVID-19 unplanned costs. Purchasing more devices and higher transportation costs of running staggered schedules. We have prepared for these as much as humanly possible, and we have a plan in effect for worst-case scenarios.
Thank you. And, and Ms. Kobian, when you think about trying to, the budget impact of trying to implement these state recommendations and what you need to do to keep students safe, how are you thinking through those questions?
Yeah, I think that, you know, without repeating what my fellow panelists have shared, I would add that we're also thinking about time horizons. So just to give you a little bit of the context that I'm talking about, I believe the previous treasurer, Lisa Flores, told me that it was just two years ago that we got back to where we were for per-pupil funding from 2009. funding from 2008, meaning that it took like a decade almost to get back to where we were. So I think it's important to recognize that even with the CARES Act funding that we got from Governor Polis, I believe that we're set to get $65 million at Denver Public Schools with about $45 to $50 million going to district-run schools. I think it's important to recognize that that time horizon for those funds are extremely restricted. They're restricted to one-time funding with like a very specific window of when you have to use them. So I think for us who are in positions of governance and the rest of our colleagues who are at the state capitol, it's incumbent upon us to be thinking about this longer-term time horizon to see what we can do in this moment to ensure that rather than to continue to accept the constraints that get exacerbated by financial disasters like this one, and school boards always having to figure out what to do, and families and students bearing the brunt of it, what can we do at the level of the state to fix our school finance system in the long term to ensure that the next time something like this happens, which could be soon, right? Health experts are identifying a second wave of COVID-19, which will have surely impacts on our economic system as well as our school system. So the movement, for example, like 271 is something that we should be thinking about, the internet as a public utility, as Mr. Mestas talked about in terms of how it impacts our rural school district. So I think when we think about those one-time-use funds, we're thinking about it in the context of multiple time horizons.
Thank you for that. One of the biggest, obviously, the core mission of schools is to educate students. And we know there's been significant learning loss over this three-month period where students have not gotten what they would have gotten if they had been in school. How do you allocate your dollars to make up for that learning loss next year? And if you want to start, Ms. Kobian, that would be great.
Sure. So I mentioned at the top of the call that in addition to the Budget Advisory Committee, our board identified COVID-19 crisis priorities that will have a fiscal note to them of some sort. One of those crisis priorities speaks exactly to what you've said. Come the reentry of students into our public school system, we have to have a way to ensure that we know, especially for our most vulnerable students, like the English language learners in my school district, which are almost 50% of the student population that I serve, that we know exactly, first of all, as a baseline, what the academics looks like. Because you can't actually measure or identify where you need to go until you have your baseline. And so we have definitely, and I think that like the way that we do school funding in DPS, and as Ms. Miller has mentioned, with student-based budgeting gives you that sort of flexibility to do that, because we already have weights on populations like English language learners to be able to ensure that they receive what they need as opposed to everybody getting something equally and focusing only on the inputs from a more centralized model. So I think this is going to be a moment where we will be able to leverage that structure to be able to make sure that we are sending our dollars, what we have, to the most vulnerable student populations.
Thank you. And Ms. Miller, how do you think about that question? Learning loss?
I look at it from two points. I believe that we have definitely a special obligation to our most vulnerable students. There's no doubt about that. They were academically behind before COVID, and they're now going to be even further behind. And we, you know, the loss in learning varies, right? We've heard anywhere from 30% loss to up to 100%. You know, depending, we've had kids that have showed up maybe one time a week. I think NPR just came out with a study that said our most poorest children maybe had access one time a week. And I know all of us in Denver and in Jeffco and Aurora across the board, where we have our most vulnerable kiddos, we know how important touchpoints are. So second, now that we know that they're behind, second, there has to be a more fundamental question. I think what we need to be talking about is that COVID is just an unprecedented challenge for us here in Colorado and across the nation in education. And are we going to face it together where every district works together, or are we going to face it on our own, where a school and a district faces it separately? So I moved down here from Alberta about 10 years ago. And the one thing we took away from that experience was that Alberta faced the challenges together. They worked together and collectively. And for example, every student up in Alberta was equally funded with what we were talking about just recently with Ms. Kobian said, with uplifts. Like there were children that had certain needs, and there were uplifts to that system. So we need to decide, I think, here in Colorado, what our values are. And are we going to get through this together? Or are we going to be separate districts and separate schools? And I hope that we can do this together.
Thank you. And Mr. Mestas, how are you allocating your money to address learning loss?
I'd have to reiterate or agree with what was said previously by my fellow board members. We have a great administration, teachers and staff that go out of their way to make sure that we succeed. Some are retired teachers who don't make their time beyond the 110 cap. That is dedication. We have been ahead of the game technologically speaking, but the lack of physical teacher-student instruction continues to be an evolving process going forward. I have no doubt that we will overcome the gaps that exist with the dedication and professional development of our staff to address the needs of our vulnerable students. There is constant dialogue with our administration and teachers on this matter occurring every day. We are anticipating a summer school, maybe next week, for those that want that help. At this point, we already have 28 people registered to that, which is all contingent on state and the local health departments. Okay. We do have that plan to keep on going, and we are constantly, constantly trying to anticipate the worst-case scenarios and not take away from our education. But it has happened already. It is just a fact.
We are up against 1 o'clock. I don't know if people need to go. There was one more question I wanted to sneak in. And I actually wanted to start with Dr. Rose on this one. Can you hang on for five more minutes? Or do you need to go?
I think I can. I've been typing some answers into the Q and
Okay, thank you for that. And actually, it does have to do with staffing because you laid out some of the staffing trends that we typically see in a recession. Of course, in this circumstance, we also have teachers who might have health concerns and be reluctant to come back to work or consider early retirement. And then we also have the potential need for additional staff to deal with smaller class sizes. There's some of the structures that we're talking about. How do you see this time maybe being different? How the specific public health concerns might shape staffing and budget considerations? And then if any school board members want to respond to that question, that would be great as well.
Yeah, I would start by saying, and I put this in one of the Q and A chats, is that we can't spend money we don't have. So districts who might say, you know, it'd be a great idea to only put 25 kids on a bus when we used to have 75, so we didn't need three times the transportation system, are going to look at their numbers and go, okay, so move on to the next strategy because that's not going to work. And they just won't have the money for it. So I don't think it's the case that we're going to see districts hire twice as many teachers and have half the class size. There's just, it's, there's just not the funding there. I do think that the interest of protecting the health of the staff, you know, if the PPE and stuff like that is not sufficient, and there will be staff who are in the high-risk vulnerability categories, there may be ones that go on disability or something else like that. Our country's going to have to figure that out. But I'm not totally convinced that we need to ask the districts to both continue to pay workers that don't work, even if it's for legitimate reasons, and do the best by its students. Those are competing goals. And that's where our government can step in and has for many industries. If you have people that can't work, they're on unemployment right now, they're getting their additional subsidies, and we need clearly to have more of that. But districts are going to have to sort of figure out what their organizing decision-making structure is. If it's students, if it's getting back, you know, learning time, if it means we got to close schools down again for two weeks, this time, we set aside the money, and then we use it when we can open back up, not spend it all while we're closed. And I think that that's going to be an issue.
Yeah. Do either of you have thoughts on that before we close out?
If I can just chime in real quickly, I think we need to really start, in my world, with what is going to be best for our children, and then depend on the processes and structures and staffing models that are directed towards that. And so I know that there are some teachers that may not be able to come back, and I get that. But because we're looking at hybrids and remote learning, how do we leverage their skill set and still allow them to be potentially remote teachers for those children that may not come back, or for the hybrids that we are looking at? So I'm hopeful that we would be able to leverage the skill sets that we have and honor where teachers may want to be, because I know some really don't want to necessarily come back into the classroom for the very reasons that Marguerite said. It's just not healthy for me to be there, and it's dangerous, but I still want to keep teaching. Versus there are other teachers that said, no, I need to be in that classroom, and I need to be with my students. And so how do we look at using those human resources wisely and effectively? And I agree 100%. We closed down. We can't keep paying people for not working. It's just not viable. So there's got to be a balance in what our community needs, what our teachers are able to provide, and what's going to be best for our students. And then once again, how do those contracts play into all of that? It's not an easy solution, as I said earlier.
We'll tail into that just a bit. I did cover quite a bit of what our COVID response would be. One thing we have done is we have already purchased a lot of sanitizing equipment to try to get ahead of the game. But if I leave you with one thing here, the rate of teen suicide in Colorado has increased by 58% in the last three years, making it the cause of 1 in 5 adolescent deaths. And another big thing for me, who are Colorado school-aged children without access to the internet, which is so critical during this time. Thank you.
Thank you to all of our panelists. Angela Kobian, who had to jump off, Dr. Rosa, Pat Mestas from Primero, and Susan Miller from Jeffco. Thank you again to our sponsors, A+ Colorado, Education Reform Now, Root Ed, Gates Family Foundation. I hope I didn't miss anyone. This was recorded. It will go out. And I'm sorry that we couldn't get to more questions. It's obviously a very complex topic that we could talk about for a long time. But thank you all very much, and good luck. You have a very difficult job in front of you.
Thanks so much, Erica. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck, everyone.